Welcome, everybody. It's September 5th, 2017, 6:30 PM. This is a regular business meeting of the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Kalikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Proclamation's Presentations. We don't have any of those tonight, so we'll go on to public hearings. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the first public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that on the 23rd day of August 2017, applications were received in the office of the City Clerk for transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 22 from First Street Station Incorporated DBA Lovejoy's Bar and Grill, 101 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to First Street Station Incorporated DBA Altitudes Chop House and Brewery, 320 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming, and transfer of microbrewery license number M5 from Gregory R. Smith and Karen J. Robillard, 320 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming, to First Street Station Incorporated, 320 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I will open this up to public comment on this transfer of a retail liquor license. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? And I'm going to wait just a second.
And you know what?
They're walking in right now.
Yes. I just saw.
Hello. Welcome.
Thank you.
Your timing is perfect. We just started the first public hearing for your retail license. So is there any comment that you guys want to make during the public hearing for your license? All right, so I will close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the second public hearing, please?
Notice is hereby given that on the 23rd day of August 2017, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a new bar and grill liquor license, number BG-5 for RS Development LLC, DBA Lovejoy's Bar and Grill, 101 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming.
Thank you. And we'll open it up right now to public comment on this bar and grill license. Is there any comment from the public on this? Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. We'll move on to announcements. City Manager.
Mayor and Council, we have two announcements. The first from Parks and Recreation.
Director Fieser.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, just wanted to remind you that this Saturday is Community Service Day. We're going to be trying to plant 120 trees out on 130. Check-in is from 7:30 to 9:00 at Kewanis Park. After that, we will be having folks out either by their own car. We have a shuttle set up through Albany County School District from Lingford Elementary School to take people out to the work site. All in all, I think if things go well, it's only about a two-and-a-half hour, three-hour event, so we should be out there well in time for the University of Wyoming football game.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, it is the first Tuesday of the month, and so our second announcement is for Fifth Sent Tuesday. This announcement was brought to us by Downtown Laramie. They will be hosting here in a few weeks the Wyoming Working Together Conference. I should say the Downtown along with the City of Laramie. So we wanted to share with you the presentation they put together regarding National Economic Development Week. The Wyoming Working Together Conference will be hosted by three parties: the Main Street Organization, the Wyoming Economic Development Alliance, and the Chambers of Commerce of the State.
Did you know, for every $1 that Laramie Main Street spent in 2016, another $11.16 was reinvested in our downtown? Last year, Laramie Main Street supporters volunteered 4,987 hours of their time. That's a value of over $112,000. We shared our love for Downtown Laramie with over 14,000 social media contacts.
Laramie Main Street Alliance raised over $117,000 for downtown revitalization in 2016.
In 2016 alone, there were 27 private reinvestment projects in the district of Downtown Laramie.
Did you know that Laramie has its own crowdfunding platform that raised $28,146 for local businesses and organizations in the last several months with 393 backers? We shopped small with 65 local Laramie businesses this Small Business Saturday.
Downtown Laramie is proud to host 3,222 jobs in just 28 blocks.
And in 2016, over $1.5 million was reinvested into the district.
Happy National Economic Development Week.
Happy National Economic Development Week.
Happy Economic Development Week.
Happy National Economic Development Week, Laramie.
(laughing).
I get autographs.
Mayor and Council, our second video for Fifth Sent Tuesday is a video actually produced by the hospital, and it highlights the community and so many things in the community that are going on that are, in fact, things that wouldn't be possible without our Fifth Sent tax support, so we wanted to share that. It's really kind of a cheer for Laramie, so hopefully we'll all feel good when it's done.
The people here are the kind of down-home, just good people where, you know, you get waved at and you don't know the people that are driving past you. I just think that fosters just a good hometown feel.
Laramie is an amazing place. There's not a lot of people. You're never in traffic. You never have to wait for a restaurant. Like, 15 minutes and you're in the mountains.
And this makes you look forward to every season, because, you know, you have winter and you can go skiing or snowshoeing. There's so many things you can do, and then as the season changes, then you start talking about camping and fishing, and there's just so many things to do around here, and it just keeps you busy.
And everyone's so outdoors, you know, oriented, which is kind of nice. It's easy to find people that are like, "Hey, you want to go on a hike?" Or, "Let's go rafting," or stuff like that.
We spend a lot of time in the mountains. Probably my local hotspot that I enjoy the most, or my kids enjoy the most, is the campfire with schmores.
The nice thing about Laramie are all the wonderful restaurants that you can have. There's not chain restaurants. There's those mom-and-pop restaurants where you can go have vegan food, Thai food, sit down and enjoy a cocktail with a friend, or have an intimate meal.
I'm a Wyoming kid, and I grew up being a huge University of Wyoming cowboy fan. I kind of bleed brown and gold that way. You know, when I look out the patient rooms, I see University of Wyoming and Memorial State, and it's a pretty awesome thing for me.
The best part about being in Laramie is the opportunities for my family. The school district here in Laramie is amazing.
The schools and extra activities for my kids, and we are constantly on the run in their activities, and they love it.
Orchestra programs and different athletic events and opportunities. A huge part of that is being a part of town with the university, and it provides just awesome opportunities for our youth.
We have an amazing rec center here in the community. It's definitely growing and expanding.
The opportunity to go down to Denver to watch major sporting, other cultural activities, airport access if you want to fly to a vacation destination. It just really offers a lot of that, but without all that big city hassle.
If you love outdoors, there's always something to do. There's great people. I mean, they're everyone's friendly, small-town community, but big enough where you have all your resources.
Everywhere I go, there's people that know about the hospital, and it's awesome, especially nowadays, to hear them say so many positive things about the way we affect their lives and the lives of their loved ones.
Mayor and Council, and we want to thank Iverson for letting us show their video, but again, just a really nice succinct highlight of what we have to offer in Laramie, and much of those things supported, of course, through the Fifth Sent. Thanks. That's our announcements for tonight. Thank you very much, City Manager. I have one other announcement to add, and that is to make sure everybody is aware of the Wyoming Economic Development, Wyoming Working Together Conference that the City Manager was alluding to. That is coming up here the 20th, 21st, and 22nd, and it is going to be here in Laramie, several groups working together. If you look at some of the things that are being offered, really talking about what are the next things in economic development, and how can we put all the tools that we have together. So for council, everybody is welcome to attend. These, if they're looking, if they're looking interesting to you, please let the clerk know, and for the general public as well. This is going to be a great opportunity for Laramie. All right, so let's move on to our next item, which is disclosures by city council members. Does anybody have any disclosures this evening? Okay, seeing none, move on to item number six, changes in the agenda. Vice Mayor.
Hey, I move that the following change to the agenda be approved. It's on our regular agenda, item number 17. We are going to delete personnel from our discussion during executive session.
Second.
Second by Counselor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second by Counselor Henry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. Second by Counselor Henry. City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, so let's move on to the regular agenda, and so item number 10 will be Counselor Gabriel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is titled "The Transfer of Retail Liquor License Number 22," and I would move that the city council approve the application for transfer of retail liquor license number 22 from First Street Station Inc. doing business as Lovejoy's Bar and Grill, to First Street Station Inc. doing business as Altitudes Chop House and Brewery, 320 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of September 6, 2017, through May 7, 2018. Contingent on RS Development LLC doing business of Lovejoy's Bar and Grill, obtaining a bar and grill liquor license, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, as stated very well in the motion. Thank you, Counselor Gabriel. This is a transfer of a retail liquor license that is presently housed at Lovejoy's Bar and Grill. The applicant would like to move that retail liquor license to the Altitudes location, that they have another business running. The contingent section is based on the Lovejoy's then picking up a bar and grill at the end of this, so you'll see that contingency. If later items don't happen, item number 10 then will just be reverted to what it was before. The applicant is here if you have questions.
Okay. So I'd like to invite the applicant up here if there's anything that you guys want to add or address about the transfer, and we're going to open up the floor to all of the discussion, both the reassigning of the new bar and grill and the transfer of the retail license. So is there anything that you wanted to add?
Please come up and remember to introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm Karen Robillard from First Street Station Incorporated, and just as a brief description of what we are doing here, the reason that we want to move our retail liquor license from Lovejoy's to Altitudes is because we run the majority of our catering operations through Altitude. Our catering staff is at Altitude, and so it just makes sense for us to be able to run all of our off-site bar organization through Altitude rather than through Lovejoy's. And so, really quite simple, the reason that we're looking to do this. And just as a quick housekeeping note, in looking at the way that we're named, and here it says Altitudes Chop House and Brewery, if we could just change that to singular Altitude Chop House and Brewery, so it has the correct name on it.
Okay.
Do you have any questions at all?
Questions for the applicant. Doesn't look like it.
Pretty simple. Okay.
Yeah, I have a question.
Please, Counselor Hanson.
Why are we doing this contingent business? Why didn't we vote on, why can't we vote on that first and get it over with and then do the other, then we don't have to do a contingency?
Counselor Hanson, that is an excellent question, one that has been asked of the City Clerk and the City Attorney, and the reason is because legally, we have to do it in this order. That's the simplest, shortest answer, but legally, we have to do it in this order.
Because she said so.
City Clerk.
I can give you a little more, a little more information. Counselor Hanson, Mayor, the reason is, is because if you did the bar and grill part first, Lovejoy's would have both a retail license and a bar and grill, be it for a few minutes is illegal for them to have two licenses at one location. So that is why. They have to move that retail. So Altitudes is, has, you'll see a letter where Altitudes relinquished their bar and grill license already, dependent on all the rest of it happening. So they've relinquished the bar and grill, so you can move the retail over to Altitudes. Then Lovejoy's will then pick up a bar and grill after, when they've gotten rid of their retail. So it's, you've just got to move all the pieces around carefully.
It reaffirms my belief in the legal system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for City Clerk on this? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any public comments on this application? Seeing none, any discussion or comments by council on this? Okay, City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. All right, so I will move on to item number 13. Counselor Henry.
Yes, this is original ordinance number 1972, amended Title V of Laramie Municipal Code, creating Chapter 5.82 Mobile Vending, and amend Chapter 5.76, Vending in Parks, to create a new code section which establishes regulations for mobile vending businesses while within the city of Laramie. This is second reading. I move to approve original ordinance number 1972, as shown in Attachment 1 and Attachment 2, in accordance with findings of fact and conclusions of law, noting a public hearing was held August 1, 2017. And not Attachment 3?
No attachment.
Let's clarify that. I think we have to put it on the floor as it was for a second reading.
That's correct. Mayor and council, council would need to vote to amend the motion to accept staff-recommended changes that are included in the latter half of Attachment 3. The top portion of Attachment 3 has already been motioned and approved during the first part of second reading.
So we need a second on the motion as read. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gabriel. Thank you. Mr. Connor, floor is yours.
Thank you. Mayor and council, so just to clarify, again, because this was postponed, and this is technically a continuation of second reading, nothing has changed as far as the motion, as well as attachments 1 and 2. We cannot change those mid-reading, so they all will be reflected in reading 3 as Attachment 1, which is Chapter 5.82. So all of the recommended and approved motions that happened during the first second reading will already be reflected, and if it is council's decision to approve and amend with staff's recommended changes, then those will also be included in amended Attachment 1 during third reading. So all of the changes are clarified in your cover sheet, but again, the three amendments that were proposed and approved during the 15th reading are changing that quote-unquote "three-day" rule, the three consecutive days at one location, to seven consecutive days for overnight storage at the vending location. 5.82.070B1 was motioned and approved to be removed entirely, and that's the vending hours of operation. However, B2 was left in place, and that's when vending within 150 feet of a residential property. And 5.82.10, the table 5.82-1, was motioned and approved to be amended to allow mobile vending within the ag district. So some of the comments that came up during our last meeting, planning staff spoke with the various city departments that are in charge of those, one of those being the fire department. We spoke to them again, and since the last time we had spoke, they no longer wish to inspect vehicles annually, and as long as the third-party inspection is done properly and they have all the needed and necessary forms and documentation of such, they are fine accepting that annually with the license application. So that would amend Sections 5.82.070.B and 5.82.070.F2, as shown in Attachment 3. And there was discussion regarding the potential ability to store vehicles overnight on street when vending next to parks. Planning staff spoke with Parks and Rec Director Todd Fieser. He had mentioned that he doesn't give approval to vend at the parks past 10:00 PM unless there's some sort of special event going on, and so he recommended that we just codify that time, so it stays that way. So staff has provided two recommended amendments to that, which is 5.76.040.G and 0. H, again, shown in Attachment 3. G codifies that no approval should be given to vend adjacent to the park past 10:00 PM unless in association with a special event permit, and H just outright codifies that no vendor shall store vehicles overnight at a vending location when vending adjacent to parks. So staff does believe that clarifies all the issues that we had during the last meeting, but I am happy to answer any questions if you have any, or I know one of our mobile vendors is here as well.
Let's start with questions for city staff. Any questions? Counselor Hanson?
The way I read 5, it's a dash or a point, 82.070B, it still says something about annual inspection by the fire department, and so I'm confused. Are they or are they not inspecting, and if they are not inspecting, who is the third-party that does inspect?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, so 070B within Attachment 3 will read that all mobile vending units shall be inspected in an appropriate manner that is approved by City of Laramie Fire Department to receive license. This does not specify who does the inspection, only that our fire department does have the final say of whether or not this person is qualified to do said inspection. It really depends on what type of inspection is happening, because there are professionals that are licensed to inspect fire extinguishers and cooking hoods. There are different professionals that are licensed to look at the piping for propane gas and things like that. So it really just does depend what work was being done and what inspections end up being required by the fire department. However, they only indicated that the quarterly or monthly, depending on how much grease is actually created in cooking operations, that really depends on how often those need to be inspected and/or cleaned. So that really does depend, but if there are any sort of propane changes, then the piping will need to be done by a licensed, I believe they said it was a licensed plumber is able to do the piping for those, and any sort of hood cleaning, those go through a licensing process as well. So this is simply that annually, when the mobile vendors do apply for their license, they will need to provide documentation that they went through all of these inspections, and our fire department will be able to say, yes, this is a valid professional that did these inspections, as opposed to just anyone.
Pardon me for saying that's very confusing. If I were a vendor, how would I know in the end that I did everything? I didn't even know where to go, who to apply to. That whole thing seems unclear to me, you know? Maybe the vendors are smarter than I, but it doesn't make much sense the way it's written right now.
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that hood cleaning and all that is taken care of with communications with the fire department, as well as in order to maintain your commercial kitchen license. Those need to be taken care of, so it's all out of the city hands. This is simply saying that we need to see that documentation. If a vendor, or any kitchen for that matter, decides not to get these inspections, then that's in their hands, but this just simply states that that needs to happen.
All right.
Vice Mayor.
Just to help out, Counselor Hanson, if you were in the business, Klaus, of this, you would know exactly where to go and what to do. You would?
I would.
You would, absolutely.
That allays my fears.
You absolutely would know.
I just have one quick question.
Please.
Approximately how many mobile vendors do we have in our community?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that would fall under, or I'm sorry, Counselor Kalikas, that would fall under this. City staff has identified three. but I am happy to answer any questions if you have any, or I know one of our mobile vendors is here as well.
Let's start with questions for city staff. Any questions, Counselor Hanson?
The way I read 5, it's a dash or .82.070B, it still says something about annual inspection by the Fire Department, and, and so I'm confused. Are they, or are they not inspecting, and if they are not inspecting, who is the third-party that does inspect?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, so, 070B, within Attachment 3, will read that all mobile vending units shall be inspected in an appropriate manner that is approved by City of Laramie Fire Department to receive license. This does not specify who does the inspection, only that our Fire Department does have the final say of whether or not this person is qualified to do said inspection. It really depends on what type of inspection is happening, because there are professionals that are licensed to inspect fire extinguishers and cooking hoods. There are different professionals that are licensed to look at the piping for propane gas and things like that. So, it really just does depend what it, what work was being done, and what inspections end up being required by the Fire Department. However, they only indicated that the quarterly or monthly, depending on how much grease is actually created in cooking operations, that really depends on how often those need to be inspected and/or cleaned. So, that really does depend, but if there are any sort of propane changes, then the piping will need to be do, done by a licensed, I believe they said it was a licensed plumber is able to do the piping for those. And any sort of hood cleaning, those go through a licensing process as well. So, this is simply that annually, when the mobile vendors do apply for their license, they will need to provide documentation that they went through all of these inspections. And our Fire Department will be able to say, yes, this is a valid professional that did these inspections, as opposed to just anyone.
Pardon me for saying that's very confusing. If I were a vendor, how would I know in the end that I did everything? I didn't even know where to go, who to apply to. That whole thing seems unclear to me, you know? I mean, maybe the vendors are smarter than I, but it, it doesn't make much sense the way it's written right now.
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that hood cleaning and all that is taken care of with communications with the Fire Department, as well as in order to maintain your commercial kitchen license, those need to be taken care of. So, it's all out of the city hands, this is simply saying that we need to see that documentation. If a vendor, or any kitchen for that matter, decides not to get these inspections, then that's in their hands, but this just simply states that that needs to happen.
All right.
Vice Mayor.
Just to help out Counselor Hanson, if you were in the business, Klaus, of this, you would know exactly where to go and what to do. You would?
I would.
You would, absolutely.
That allays my fears.
You absolutely would know.
I just have one quick question.
Please.
How many, approximately how many mobile vendors do we have in our community?
Mayor and Counselor Hanson, that would fall under, or I'm sorry, Counselor Polikas, that would fall under this. City staff has identified three. All other businesses that happen to be mobile are simply caterers, or do some sort of operation. That's just constantly operating. There may be more that decide to come into town, there may be some that we haven't identified. However, that specifically fall under this is, is we-
At this point in time, we're-
At this point, we've identified three.
Approximately.
Approximately, yes.
Three, maybe possibly one more or something, but-
Yes.
Two to five.
That would be correct.
Okay.
Counselor Shumway, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for city staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connor, appreciate it. Did our mobile vendor want to make any comments?
I was introduced to seven days.
Mr. Wetzel?
It was passed last time.
Okay, just checking, wanted to give you the opportunity, all right. Okay, so, Vice Mayor.
So, I do have a question, so, in order to, um, I guess, codify 5.76.040G and H., I would need to make a motion, is that correct? Sorry.
As well as these-
Mayor and Counselor Pierce, that is correct. It would simply the same process as the amendments that were made last time, simply you could just refer to them as staff-recommended amendments, as shown in Attachment 3. If that was done and approved, then those would all be reflected, along with the previous ones, in a full Attachment 1 or Chapter 5.82 next reading.
This is our third, five, seven, or we're still on two?
No, this is second.
We're on two.
So, we would need a motion to-
Please. I'm ready.
Yep. Vice Mayor?
I would like to make a, make a motion to approve the two bullet points on Attachment 3 regarding the staff recommendations, for the first one being fire inspection requirements. It's basically just a change in wording, and the second bullet point has to do with time limit and parking overnight adjacent to parks.
Second. Second by Counselor Henry. All right. Any questions on that motion? So, that basically will codify all of the staff's recommendations in Attachment 3? Are there any comments from the public on that motion? Okay, come back to counsel, comments or discussion on the motion from counsel?
This would be an amendment, correct?
This is an amendment, right? On the amendment. Okay. City Clerk, can you do roll call on the amendment, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
No.
Henry.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, so that will be reflected in our third reading copy. All right, further discussion by counsel on this ordinance, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you, I, I just, I thought it was more than three, but I'm just, two to five, whatever we're gonna say. We've done a huge amount of work for three mobile vending companies, and I feel we're trying to micromanage it, too. I, I could see just a couple of simple rules, parking on a public street, parking next to a park, or something like that, but we're going into there, and if you, if you park on a, on a private property that somebody's asked you to help promote their business, I just, I'm just astounded on this, and just, I, I'm, I'm not gonna support it. I mean, I voted to give them more days and everything, but, man, we're micromanaging this, and it just, it just didn't need to be, it didn't need to be this much for just three things, three mobile vendors, it's just unbelievable to me. The things that the city has to deal with, the problems that we're foreseeing because of money and everything else, and we're spending our time on this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion by counsel on this? All right, any further discussion from the public on this before we go to the second reading vote? Mr. Wetzel?
Uh, council members, Mayor, uh, my name is Trent Wetzel, I'm with Double Dubs. Going through some of the stuff, there is a lot here to follow and everything that we, that we try to go through. Reading through it and looking through some of the other stuff, like the mobile vending license, it, it kinda got me wondering if there are any other licenses in town, like a restaurant license, you know, for, through the city, like a, or like a clothing license permit and everything. So, I was just kinda curious of why we need to get all this stuff if we're the only people, you know, only three, three doing it. So, are there any other, like a restaurant license, do you need to get a restaurant permit to do a city, through the city, like what we're trying to do?
Yes.
There is one?
There are, there are various types of licenses, there's an alcohol restaurant license.
Yeah, but is there like a permit, an annual fee for like a restaurant, to be a restaurant, or for a clothing store to be a clothing store?
City Clerk, can you clarify for us?
Yes, Your Honor, there are several different license, different businesses that are licensed, secondhand stores, pawn shops, private security, I'm just thinking off the top of their head, there's some specialized areas that do require annual business licenses, taxis, and they have to pay every year to have a license.
I just, I just wasn't sure about that. And then, just like going through some of the other stuff, just like Schuster said, there's just so much here, you know, that we could kinda go back and forth with all day and everything. You know, we already have rules and regulations set in place for us to vend in the town, you know, we have to get approved through the State Alcohol Department, we have to get approved through the Fire Department, we have to do all these things still, you know, just like Ocean, Ocean from On the Hook, Fish and Chip said, he, he just doesn't understand why we're, we're here and stuff, so, but, I think that's all.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for our mobile vendor? Thank you for coming and, and being here again tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Any other discussion by counsel? Counselor Polikas.
Yeah, I do have some comments. Well, I'd like, I'd like to point out some things, and, and I'm hoping there's a few other counselors that are on the fence on this. I really haven't come to a conclusion on this recently, but at first reading, I asked two questions. I asked, has, has there been any problems, has there been any comments from the public as to, as to this business? And the answer was no. And then I asked a second question, and I said, and this, actually, the answer to this kinda surprised me, because it's competition, but I asked if there's any retail restaurants that have complained about the mobile vendors, and once again, the answer was no. So, it tells me that, and then the third thing, I kind of asked, is I said, well, why are we doing this? And the answer was, well, because it was a council goal. Matter of fact, it was reported in, in the paper today, it was a, a primary or a direct council goal. Well, that's not quite correct. The council goal was parking, okay? And somehow this, and it's my fault, because I should've looked at it, and in the future, I'm gonna start paying more attention to what we're doing for goals, because as a subtitle under parking, it was vending. So, how much of this ordinance is really related to parking? When we start talking about it? And, and secondly, is there a parking problem with our vendors? I haven't heard any from anyone in any capacity. Now, what are we talking about? We're talking about three businesses in our community. You show me another ordinance anywhere that we've created for, and by the way, these are not full-time businesses, these are seasonal businesses, they're like, they're not even half-year businesses, if you will, because our climate's such that you can't run for six months and be very effective. So, we're creating an ordinance for three businesses in town that there wasn't a problem with, they've done everything correct, they haven't caused any stir in the community, and I just think it's too excessive. Now, a couple other things, we're a community of thirty-two thousand people. The examples that were given to us for other, for other vending ordinances, they're all communities that are at least double our size. Cheyenne, Boulder, Boulder's hundred thousand, hundred and twenty, I'm not exactly sure, Fort Collins, Fort Collins is like five times our size now, a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty thousand people. I, I can see a time when we need this, and certainly the work that staff's done on this, I don't think it's gonna go to waste, because I think there will be a time when we perhaps have a, a large business, but right now, we have, this isn't even a satellite, this is three people in town that have devised an economic or a, a entrepreneurship way of, of, in essence, a part-time job. Another thing I want to point out, one person, these are one-people businesses, there's not a lot of employees or anything else. What other restaurant in town can you think of that the owner does all the ordering, does all the, does all the, all the order-taking, does the cooking, does the cleaning, does everything? This is what these businesses, this is what these guys do, and a hundred dollars for a fee, for them, it's a lot more money than it is an organized restaurant in our community, proportionately. It's a lot more. These are all the things that are weighing on my mind. That's pretty much what I had to say, and when I, I look at it, there will be a day when this, when we need an ordinance like this, but this is not a parking problem in our community, and this should not be part of our parking goals, in all honesty. And it's, it's my fault, I should've said, I should've said something, I should've tried to argue to take it off at that time. We created, we, there was a perception of this problem by perhaps a few counselors, but then when you do the research on it, we don't have a problem here, yet we're creating the ordinance. So, I hope I can convince a few more counselors not to support it at this time, but I, I will tell you this, that I will not be supporting this on second reading. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion by counsel? Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just love 5.82 or .100, because it's exceptions, which throws out everything that existed up to that point, because we can make an exception to anything, and then we have no more ordinance when we approve the exceptions, and they are right there. So, I'm joining you. I, I, I don't see any good reason to support it in its present form. Thank you.
Further comments or discussions?
I think you-
City Manager, please.
Mayor and Council, if I could, I wanted to address a couple, I guess, concerns I have about the council's perception and any answers you may have received. I don't think I was here on first reading, but Counselor Polikas, when you asked if there had been any complaints, and you were told, I don't know by whom, that there have not been complaints, that is not true. My office dealt with a number of complaints, probably over the course of the last twelve to fourteen months. Have there been a lot of complaints? No. But we have had complaints about mobile vendors specifically not being compliant with your existing parking ordinance, we worked with them on it, and they were really great to work with, and we've corrected the issue, the Police Department worked with them on those issues. Specifically, just quickly, the issue was parking on Third Street, and then up on the curb in order to level the, the kitchen effectively, which is the vehicle, and we certainly understand why they needed to do that, but that is unacceptable under your current parking ordinances to park on the curb, and we had concerns about parking on Third Street, it's a busy street, right? So, we worked through that, and they were great to work with. You asked if you'd, you, you said that you'd been told there have been no problems voiced by brick-and-mortar restaurants, that is not true. Also, in the last eighteen, well, yeah, I'd say twelve to eighteen months, we had specific questions from downtown restaurants who were upset because Parks and Rec permitted a mobile vendor to vend in the right-of-way adjacent to the city park, which is the downtown plaza, and there was concern from that gentleman, and I don't remember the name of the person, I just remember it was a gentleman, but it was a downtown business owner who said, you know, why are these people being effectively allowed to do business from a publicly-owned right-of-way and compete directly with me? So, I want to put that on the record, those are issues I am aware of, there could be other issues, but those are issues my office dealt with directly. I want to say this, this is a council goal, and you're correct in that it was lumped under the auspices of generally reviewing parking, because at the point in time when you adopted your goals, our understanding was that these vendors wished to park in our city rights-of-way and vend from those rights-of-way. So, we approached the ordinance recognizing that in all aspects of city-owned right-of-way, the city heavily regulates those activities, down to, we regulate the type of sign, the number of sign, the font of the sign that can be placed in right-of-way. We regulate whether or not equipment can be staged in the rights-of-way. We regulate who can park, when they can park, and what they can park. We also regulate when alternative traffic control is put in place for construction, we review every plan and, and do that for safety. So, the thing that I would say is, if the council don't want to vote for this ordinance, I understand, but understand first that the reason city staff are looking at it is if they're vending from the right-of-way, that is absolutely the duty of the city, staff and council both, to regulate, to protect the safety of the public, and we regulate everything that happens in our right-of-way. Fortunately, though, as staff met with the vendors, the vendors said, guess what, we don't want to vend from your right-of-way, which frankly is kind of a relief, because it poses some serious questions. So, what I would ask you is if, counsel, you wish not to regulate vending on public-private, excuse me, on public property, i.e. the length of time they can be on that private property or whatever, that's your call, but I would hope that you wouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater, and I would draw your attention to Section 5.82.090, and note that staff still feel, and the vendors have expressed to us, that they have no conflict with our recommendation as staff to disallow any mobile vending in city rights-of-way, and that would include, so if you, if you throw the baby out, keep this part, right? And then that would also disallow the exception wherein they can vent from the right-of-way if they're adjacent to a city park. So, you know, private property is one thing, it's probably not gonna bother anyone if a vendor vents for three weeks on private property, unless you're the restaurant next door, right? And that's a public policy matter that you guys have to work with. But city staff would strongly recommend that you don't allow vending in the right-of-way, and perhaps even when that right-of-way is adjacent to public property, or, excuse me, city park property. So, I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I did want to explain why it was in the parking, because we did think they wanted to park in our streets. We were wrong.
Questions for City Manager, Counselor McKinney?
Has anybody been cited for, for vending in the right-of-way?
Well, it's not illegal to vend in the right-of-way.
As long as they have the application.
As long as they're parked legally, then it's okay, and we don't even have a license right now, right? They have to have a restaurant.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So, if they're parked illegally-
But nobody's been cited, and nobody's been kicked off of a right-of-way, or nobody's been-
I, I can't answer your question directly, I'd need to pull up our, our data through the Police Department. I know we had numerous conversations with one of the vendors that spanned many weeks, repeated contacts, but did work through the issue. The goal being not to cite them, but to work through the issue, because mobile vending is kind of a new phenomenon, it may be the wave of the future, and it may be something we see pervasive for decades, or it could just be a fly-by-night thing. So, we didn't, we didn't want to cite, and frankly, we didn't have the strength of our code to give us the ability to cite unless they were egregiously in violation of the, say, overtime parking or something like that. Sorry, I can't give you a better answer, Counselor McKinney.
Counselor Polikas has a question as well?
I actually have another question for, I'm not sure whether the Planning Department or, or City Manager, but I know several of our restaurants have tables and so forth out in our right-of, in other words, there are several restaurants that do use our right-of-way, i.e. the sidewalks, for their business. Is that regulated or permitted? Is there a permit process or anything, any, anything for that type of use of our right-of-ways?
Through you, Mayor, Counselor Polikas, yes, there is. We have one establishment downtown that has appropriately adhered to code and been properly permitted for sidewalk seating, we have a number of other establishments that are not properly permitted, and the city clerk has initiated a conversation with those non-compliant folks to bring them into compliance.
Thank you.
Further discussion or comments by counsel on this? Counselor McKinney?
So, so there is a permit that you could purchase to be in the right-of-way?
Um, Mayor and Counsel, there is no permit that you can purchase right now under city code to sell things out of the city's right-of-way, out of that public property, no.
So, the seats that are sitting outside of a restaurant that is permitted, and they're selling food on the street in the right-of-way?
Uh, no, that, sorry, through you, Mayor, Counselor McKinney, on the sidewalk seating, there's a different section of code, I thought you were talking about mobile vendors, food trucks, yeah.
I mean, I was, I was pertaining to some of the restaurants, but there's a permit that they can purchase to be able to, to do what they do.
Correct, there's a process that they can go to-
Or sidewalk.
To make their sidewalk seating legal.
Okay.
Correct, and then to sell food and liquor into that area.
Angie, do you want to add anything? Okay.
But we don't have that process for mobile vending food trucks.
Right.
That's the topic for tonight.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Can I ask the City Manager, basically, I think you spoke to Section 090 and 100, is that correct?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Hanson, you are correct.
Yeah, well, you know, I wouldn't mind keeping those and getting rid of the rest, I'm sorry.
Well, I believe our mobile vendors would like to comment, so- Well, I believe our mobile vendors would like to comment, so. Just go forward and introduce yourself again for the record.
I'm Carrie Wasell with Double Dubs. So, this is a little bit tricky for me to talk about, because this is a public setting, so it makes me really nervous, not because it is public, but because of the issue at hand. All of the complaints, we actually, most of them have been directed at Double Dubs specifically, to the point where we had to get a lawyer involved, and got all the complaints together. They were filed by one individual. We are unsure why. That's why I get nervous talking about this in public, like, we had to send a cease and desist letter with so many feet with our children listed on there. Excuse me.
But let, let me help you out for just a second.
Yep.
We have to make sure, and I know this is a difficult subject for you, so feel free to take a breath. You're okay.
I'm good.
We have to keep concentrating on what's in the ordinance.
Yes, I know, that's-
And we got to speak to the point.
That's what I'm discussing.
Yep.
So, we were talking about complaints specifically about the food vendors was addressed. So, yes, there have been complaints by one individual to one company, and there had been no tickets issued, none of that. If you would like, we could speak to the lawyer and provide the documentation for that. As far as the brick-and-mortar, I believe that probably the lawyer could state that that was this individual stating that they were the brick-and-mortar. It was not, in fact, the brick-and-mortar. So, that's all I have to say about that, so.
Thank you.
Yes, there have been complaints. One specific individual, we can supply that information if you'd like, I, I think with the discussion of the lawyer.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Councilor Polikas, did you have a question?
This would be my second time, so if anybody else-
Anybody else would like to go first? Would like to, anybody, any other comments or discussion? Councilor Henry?
I just want, I don't have a question for you. I just want to comment that I hope that this is an up-and-coming thing, the mobile vending. I really like it, and I think that it's up to the city council and the city staff to have an ordinance on the books that regulates this. I think it's important-
I'm sorry.
For us. It's important for our, our safety and the safety of the vendors as well. And, and I'm sorry that some of them don't like some of these things, but I'm going to vote yes for this ordinance, and I think that the city staff has done a lot, and they've changed it the way we've asked them, and I just, I think it's an important ordinance for us to have on the books for the future.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, I, I might have stated this before, but in, and I realize we're a small town, but in communities, you know, slightly larger than our own, there's so much regulation to this type of business where they literally, to get that license, to be on that corner for that six months or whatever it is, people stand and, and stand in line for days and sleep outside in their sleeping bag to get that particular spot to, to vend to, to our public. And I think it's important, like Councilor Henry said, that we have this ready to go and on the books, and, and I think we also need to be fair to our brick-and-mortar establishments. I mean, I think if I would, we just gave out two bar and grill licenses, right? And they're spending a pretty big chunk of change. And, and they're going to put up some really nice signs, and they're, and they're working really hard, right? How would you feel after you spent quarter million, half a million, whatever it is they're going to spend, three-quarters of a million, million dollars, whatever, and all of a sudden you had a huge truck sitting right in front of your building, and, and people couldn't even see your new, your new restaurant? And I, I think you really need to take that into consideration, because that is the public right-of-way that we're talking about here. Now, I understand folks are a little concerned that we're getting a little over regulatory, but I don't really see it that way, and I think, I think we need to, and, you know, sometimes I have that theory, you know, the more restaurants you have, or, or whatever, you kind of cluster your business, and it's actually good. But when you can't see the new restaurants' sign and the location when you're driving by, that's a problem. It's a huge problem. And, and I don't want any of our businesses downtown not to be seen because of a vehicle being parked in front. Now, they're probably going to be very considerate and not do that, but we don't know that. We don't know the next guy is going to come in and not do that. I think we, we set these things up to take care of and to avoid problems. This is clearly avoiding future problems, and staff did an amazing job on this ordinance. So, I, of course, am going to support this, so.
Any other comments for their first time? Councilor Shumman?
Well, this is, I am very much in support of the success of mobile vending, but I think I'm going to support this ordinance, and the reason is because I think that there is an opportunity for the city to protect the vendors from unfair competition that may come later. Now, I look at things like high school and junior high kids that do lemonade stands, or they may do snow removal from sidewalks, or they could do something like lawn mowing services. We certainly don't want to put any impediment in front of them to keep them from having something that, that they feel a little bit of entrepreneurial success with. However, there are some that come into town, they see the signs, you know, where they say, you know, "We'll, we'll sell your home," or "We'll paint your house," or "We'll, you know, do something," and they, they put up signs, you know, and they're here for, I think, for a short time, and then they move on, and I think that that's unfair to the established businesses that we have here. This ordinance, I see some, some very good pieces to it. I see some that are unnecessary. But I, I believe it's important for us to, to at least have something on the books so that we say, you know, that we will make sure that, that the way that they do business is friendly to the, the businesses, to the citizens, and to the city of Laramie as they, you know, go forward with, with what, what they have. I don't think that we've put something forward with what we have now that is going to limit their success. I think it's, it's obviously a nuisance. It's more difficult, but I think it's something that, you know, they will be glad when the unscrupulous kind of people come into this business that try to do things that would be unfair, since they have been reasonable, which our city manager said they have been. They've worked with, the ones that we have here have worked very favorably with the city, but there may be some that come along, and, and I think the vendors that do, do a, a, a good job will be glad that we have some limits on those that may come in and try to turn things upside down.
Other comments for their first time? So, I'll make a couple of brief comments. So, this food trucks is an up-and-coming industry, and it is very popular in college towns. When working with the, the university councils, lead with the National League of Cities, this is a topic of conversation. We are not the only city, especially college town, that is struggling with how to regulate this and how to do it. And it's become, the regulation has become necessary for public safety. I absolutely think we have to make sure we don't have food trucks parking on Third Street next to right-of-ways and things along those lines and, and causing obstruction. This ordinance, I think, although it seems a lot, it's just a few pages long, including with definitions. Most of the exceptions are to give more leniency to the food trucks for special events. They are to give more leniency to the staff to grant those one-off and unique situations that might come up, and so I think that those exceptions are, a lot of them are, are important to keep in there. From what we started with on first reading, we're now on our second, second reading here. We've made some substantive changes to this in working with the vendors that have been here. They've had input. They've asked us to change things. We've taken a look at it, and we've changed quite a bit of this ordinance, including, you know, hours and trying to elongate how long they can operate and, and allow them to do more things. One of the things that I've seen in some of the examples that were given and in some of the other college towns is charging for right-of-way, charging for being, for parking at a right-of-way and vending to a park. That's not in this ordinance. So, I don't think that we've gone too far. I think that there's still quite a bit of stuff that was left on the table that other cities and towns are doing, and we're not there yet. I think this is a step in the, in the right direction to put something together, and I think it's, it's necessary for a lot of, a lot of the reasons that have been stated. So, I'll leave it at that. Councilor Polikas, I think you're first for second comments.
Yeah, and the main thing I wanted to say is, the parking aspects of it, you know, I'm not sure how to do, one way is to vote this down and then just bring it forward with the parking requirements, so the other way would be to try to amend it, amend it and only have the parking requirements in there, because I'm in support of that. It's, it's just all the other stuff that's involved in it, and you're talking about three companies in town, or, they're not even companies, three, three individuals that have a small entrepreneurial business, and we're regulating the heck out of them, in, in my opinion. We, if, if we could dial it down to make it reasonable for what we have in front of us today, which is three businesses, it would make sense to me. And when we become one of the big boys and, and we have an issue with this, then, then all, all the power to it. But the, the communities that have licensing for this, they're not 32,000 population communities. They're communities that are twice our size, and we're not going to get there for quite a long time. So, I'd be all for putting an amendment forward, or, or if, if it was suggested that we do an amendment, but the problem is I'd be doing it on the fly right now, and I'm not sure that's the best way to do it. So, I'm kind of caught in, in how to do things at this point in time. Okay?
Yeah, I think that's-
There's one other thing I wanted to say, too. It's a $120 fee, okay? And, and I, we just passed the restaurant liquor, restaurant liquor license, but what's the fee for that? Oh, excuse me, we just passed a fee, didn't we not pass a fee for, no, we have not passed a fee yet for inspections, health inspections for restaurants, correct? But we have passed one for, in my mind, these are part-time businesses that are working five months out of the year, maybe six months out of the year, and if there's a fee, it, the fee should be as nominal as we can possibly make it, because it's, just because of the nature of the business, in fairness to them. We're basically charging a fee for them that's, that's twice as expensive it is as a full-time restaurant, and I don't think we should be doing that either. I think we should have less than that. I think it should be $50 or $60 for a fee, very, very minimum, so it's not, not hurting them too much out of pocket. So, thank you.
But to, just to clarify, I think this was a discussion we had when you weren't here for the other reading.
I apologize.
Please, let me clarify. On the fee, the, the staff-proposed fee, the information we were given was that it was at a, operating at a net zero, so they believe $120 is what it costs in staff time to off the set. It will cover the staff time needed to complete all the required inspections and approvals and paperwork, so that's where the $120 fee came from.
Thank you.
So, I think it, Councilor McKinney?
Thanks, Mayor. But aren't we moving the inspections to somebody else now, to a third party? Are they going to get charged there, and how much is that going to cost them?
I think that would be a question for city staff.
I mean, you're talking about moving, the fire department's not going to do it, and now they got to have the health inspector, then they got to have fire inspection alternatively on the outside for a third party. It's going to cost them a fee. That's going to cost them money. They're not going to do it for free.
Let's ask city staff. I think that's appropriate question. City staff, could you clarify as to whether the fire inspection fee and time was included in the $120, and if not, have you talked about the fire inspection fee from a third party that the vendor would pay?
Cleaning, the, I mean, there's, there's the plumbing, the inspection for the plumbing to make sure that the propane's properly for the permit that they're getting.
I think it's important to separate what the city does from what the state health department requires, because a restaurant license and hoods and stuff, that's-
I know, but I'm just saying they're still paying these fees to get these done, to have the inspections done.
Can you talk to the fire inspection and the fire inspection fee, please?
Mayor and council, yes, it's, it's a, the concept behind that was to cover roughly between three, three and five hours of staff time, depending on who is all working on everything. I do believe that hood inspections and everything are needed to be paid for, however, again, that's going to be done regardless of what the fee is, and that would need to be done in order to maintain a commercial kitchen. Yes, for some it may be more than the staff time requires. For some, it may not be, because we have nothing to really base this off of. That was a, a rough estimate by staff of how much time it would take on an annual basis, three to five hours of staff time to take care of all of this. If you decide that you want to go lower, we can make that change. If council decides that they want to increase it, we can make that change. It, again, was just a, a rough estimate of annually between three and five hours of staff time, not just for inspections, not just for looking at licensing, but encompassing this concept as a whole, whether that's dealing with potential enforcement that needs to happen, whether that's dealing with complaints and contacting everyone and making sure that there were no issues covered. It's just attempting to numer, you know, give a number to exactly what staff is going to be doing on a yearly basis. If you decide that it's less than that, then we will change it as so, but that was the attempt that staff made.
City manager?
I was just wondering, Eric, could you reiterate for the council, since we had some folks who weren't here, what the other nearby cities we surveyed were charging, so they get that perspective? My point being, council, that our estimates appear to be in line with what other cities are charging to recoup costs, and I don't have the data, but Eric does.
Let me find it real quick here.
At Boulder?
Yeah.
Licensing fees is equivalent with Fort Collins at $10 a month. Fort Collins requires $60 for six months or $120 for 12 months, but there are no month-to-month as we are proposing, where if you apply and you only operate two months out of the year, then you only pay for two months out of the year. Cheyenne is $75 annually per vehicle or location, and charging, I can go through all the numbers for city right-of-way allowance, but you're charged for, say, a regular vehicle, approximately $80 a month for 200 square feet, which is roughly the size of one parking spot in Laramie. So, that would be a total of 155 annually if you're vending on the street. Boulder, Colorado, $242 annually per vehicle and a $25 sales tax licensing fee annually, and that is per business, so. It's certainly run-of-the-mill for the information that we've been given. A lot of this was based off of the information that we could gather as far as inspections as well, so for everything that they're doing, we would also be looking at, and that's what they decided to charge.
Mr. Hunter, could you also please clarify the conversation with the fire inspections? They already have some type of fire inspection that they were receiving, I believe, or they were getting, and that was the, the argument was that they were getting one someplace, and then they didn't want to come to the city of Laramie and get a second one. Is that correct?
That is correct. Mayor and council, during preliminary conversations with fire, they said they wanted to ensure, they wanted vehicles to come in annually so that they can make sure that the propane assemblies are hooked up to the vehicle correctly, so we don't have propane tanks falling off and rolling down Third Street. Since then, they changed their mind and decided that the information that they do get, which is required for all of these businesses already, was sufficient for them to simply review and update in their system to make sure that all of those boxes are checked, to make sure that everything is safe. They decided to push on that responsibility to those people that are actually licensed and professionals in that field, as opposed to general fire safety. So, those third-party inspections were already happening. They just changed their mind from wanting to see them annually in person to just looking at the reports that were given by those inspectors that are already inspecting the vehicles.
Thank you.
Is that-
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
So, I think it's important that we do not confuse the city license fee with cost of operation fees. Businesses, mobile vending trucks, restaurants, they have costs of their operation that they have to absorb when they go to sell a product. So, so the, the hood inspection is a cost of operation. No matter if you're a brick-and-mortar or a mobile vending or whatever it happens to be, you have to take care of- a mobile vending or whatever it happens to be, you have to take care of your, either truck or your building so it doesn't blow up and get, you know, so that's a cost of operation. The fee works out to be what? For the city, if they get a license for two months, it's ten, ten dollars a month for twenty bucks?
That's correct.
Right. So, so if they vend from, for four months, we're talking a collection of forty dollars compared to, no matter what type of business they had, is the cost of operation. Right? I mean, professionals have to get licenses, contractors need licenses, mental health counselors, you know, whatever kind of business you're in, you have a cost of your operation.
Mayor and counsel, to speak on that, um, some specific examples that were given to me by the fire department for, say, hood inspections, these types of things. If they're creating a very greasy product regardless of whether they're mobile or whether they're a brick and mortar commercial kitchen, the fire department can require them to get their hood inspected and cleaned twice a month, um, which is one of the numbers that was given to me. They are requiring a business in town to get their hood cleaned twice a month. Um, those expenses are paid by the business. However, in order for them to comply with fire safety, they're required to do it that frequently. However, if there was, um, a, a T-shirt vendor that decided to be mobile, they clearly don't have those expenses so that wouldn't be a part. Um, so the fire department would not be requiring to them to get those inspections and provide that paperwork to them on a yearly basis. So it really does depend on the type of business as well as if it's a kitchen, what type of food they're cooking, whether it's very, very greasy or whether it involves no grease whatsoever. It really just depends, but those are all taken care of third-party and are required regardless of what, uh, fees are charged to be a mobile vendor.
Thank you. Further questions or clarifications on that? Okay, thank you. Any other comments from council members on this before we go to a vote on second reading? Okay. City clerk, will you do a roll call, please, on the second reading?
Henry.
Yes.
As a vendor. Henry?
Yes.
Yes. Hanson?
No.
Gabriel?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
Polikas?
No.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
No.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is five yeses and four nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. That moves on to third reading.
James, do it.
All right. Um, it is about quarter to eight. Why don't we take a brief 10-minute break before we do our next item? All right. So let's move on to item number fourteen, and that'll be Counselor Shumway.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a final plat. Um, it's the Stagecoach Ridge First Division subdivision, a final plat for six lots of a parcel of land about one point five eight acres in size. I move to approve the Stagecoach Ridge First Edition, First Edition subdivision final plat in accordance with findings of fact and conclusions of law. I authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the plat.
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. Mr. Connor?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Um, so as I say, this is a final plat, the first edition of what's being called the Stagecoach Ridge subdivision. Um, this, uh, is located east of Falcon Court and north of Beaufort Street. Um, the preliminary plat came before you last year, um, on August second, two thousand sixteen. Um, this specific final plat was, um, at Planning Commission in January of this year. Um, after requested, uh, delays by the applicant, um, we just ended up taking it off your agenda for a while until things got handled, um, as well as just some delays getting the, um, required documents in to the city, um, from the bank. I will mention just a little bit of, of background for you. Uh, there was a variance request for, um, the above-ground power lines, if you remember, um, that, which are located just north of where this subdivision ends. There are above-ground power lines. Um, a variance was requested to let those remain above ground and that was denied. Um, so any final plating, uh, north of these six lots would require the burying of those lines. Um, staff has required a temporary turnaround, um, to be constructed, uh, at the northern side of this final plat, um, which will be maintained and there is an agreement, um, that will be recorded along with this final plat to make sure that that, um, is able to meet the standards required by our fire apparatus in case there is some sort of emergency. And then once that area north of this gets platted, then that will go away and the road will be constructed. So, um, it is six lots and I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, the applicant and his engineer are here as well, if you have any specific questions for them.
Questions. Counselor Schuster?
Is the temporary turnaround, is it gravel, asphalt, what is it going to be made of?
Um, it's some type of permeable surface. Uh-
So gravel?
Yeah, some type of gravel. Um, it might be-
Might be road mill asphalt, might be-
Yeah, it might-
concrete-
It, there are, um, standard details from the engineering department that it will need to comply with and that ensures that it will, uh, handle that weight load of the fire apparatus, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Well, Counselor Gabriel, first, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, uh, wondering about the cost of burying the power line. Do you have an estimate on what that might be?
Twenty-five feet.
I have it in here. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head. However, it was a fair amount, um, because it is required to be done at the subdivision stage. So, um, the entire preliminary plat will need to be done, which encompasses three cul-de-sacs, not just the one. Um, so it will be done between, um, right here, this Deadwood Court and, um, all the way out until the next, um, the ending of the subdivision. So I don't remember off the top of my head and there's a whole lot of documents in here.
So that would, that would go close to Twenty-Second Street, then?
That's correct. It goes up until there, um, bounded north by the ridge line.
Vice Mayor? So, um, how temporary is temporary and, and is the temporary turnout within the square, the red square of our picture, or is it in the property above?
Um, Mayor and counsel, it is, if you're referring to this, is it this picture?
Yes.
Um, it is just on the northern side of this. This is simply the final plat area. Um, it's located north of the final plat area within the preliminary platted area. Um, as far as temporary, um, as soon as the next stage happens, um, it will eventually turn into a street, which there are a two-year time limit on these plats. So, in effect, if nothing ever happens again, then it would remain temporary forever. However, um, as soon as the next development occurs to finish this cul-de-sac and start the next phase of the subdivision, then it will be completed and turned into the cul-de-sac as designed.
So, if I heard you correctly, and just to reword what you said, best-case scenario is that they will come forward within the next two years, finish the top part of the, um, development or the, the above cul-de-sac area. Worst-case scenario is they never go forward with it and we, the city, will be maintaining a, a turnaround to make sure in case of fire emergency or whatever that they will, the fire trucks will be able to get out. So is that what I'm hearing? So we're either two years or indefinitely?
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Pierce, um, somewhat correct, some incorrect. We do have this temporary turnaround agreement where as soon as this is final platted, this gets recorded, which puts the maintenance requirements on the owner. Um, so the city will not be required to maintain it. However, the owner will be up to city standard. Um, so it will be maintained whether or not the rest of the development occurs. Um, and the subdivision bonding for this is only bonded for the portion of the road that is required to be built with this subdivision. So anything beyond that, um, just as any other preliminary plat in town, is not being required with the final plat for the addition that they're doing currently. Um, it's just one of the potentials with subdivision and the speculation of land building. Um, however, the agreement outlines that the subdivider and the property owner will be maintaining that turnaround to our standard.
But then if it's a temporary road, then it's not really our standard, right? Wouldn't it have curb and gutter?
Uh, Mayor and counsel, um, in the agreement, it's that it will be constructed, um, in accordance with one of our design standards, um, which is that for, um, our standard for temporary turnarounds. So, we do have a standard for them. Um, no, it's not your typical curb, gutter, sidewalk, full street. Um, however, we do have standards for this type of situation. It's not uncommon in any, um, manner. This is typically what is required when, um, a subdivision or a final plat doesn't fully complete and connect a street. We do have these temporary turnarounds put in place and so there is a standard for them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Further questions? Counselor Henry?
Um, so which six lots are we final plating here? Because all I have is a map of the preliminary plat which shows block one, block two, block three.
Um, there should be, there should have been a final plat in your attachments.
I see on Deadwood Court.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I've got it. I didn't see that one. I had it turned sideways. Okay, gotcha. So I do have a question about the, the power line.
Please.
So, are we talking about an existing power line that we have to bury?
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Henry, that is correct. Um, there is currently an existing overhead power line that stretches across the preliminary platted subdivision. Um, at final plat is when we require all of our infrastructure improvements to be completed, um, which is why when that gets completed, um, our code says that all above-ground power lines shall be buried.
Right.
Um, so when a portion of the subdivision gets final platted, that includes that overhead power line, which would be directly north of this one, then it would be required to be buried at that time-
Okay, so-
-with that final plat.
My question is, these six lots that we would, that we are approving tonight, they are, they don't, they don't get their power from that existing power line? They get their power from another power line?
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Henry, I'm not entirely sure, um, where they get their power line, whether it's from one that's pre-existently buried. Um, however, since it's not within the bounds of this final plat, we can't require them to actually bury it. Um, it would be comparable to if someone subdivided a property and it, it was next to some above-ground power lines, we wouldn't be able to make them bury them until the actual land that the power lines are on is being developed.
Okay.
Um, so just because this abuts it to the south, there's no requirement whatsoever in code for those to be buried.
Okay. Um, one more question.
Sure.
And I think you said it at first, but I'm just going to, uh, reconfirm that you said that this is the same final plat that came before us a while back and it was postponed?
Mayor and Counselor Henry, that is correct. Uh, it has come before you. Um, whether we spoke on it or not many months ago, I, I don't believe so, but it, it has been on the agenda a handful of times while we've been waiting for these documents to arrive.
Okay.
We finally have all of the required documents, which is why we're now actually proceeding with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Clarify for me. The six lots that are in this preliminary, in this final plat, the first one, they require underground wiring, correct?
Going to the, the actual-
No, in, inside the confines of this development. It says underground wiring-
That is correct.
-according to, eh, what I read in the documentation, right?
That is correct.
So, to envision this, there's an overhead power line. They construct something in addition to get to the border of the, or to the, eh, limit or whatever, the border, eh, confines of this, eh, place, and then it goes down and it has to be underground the way it's written right now. Is that correct?
That's correct. All new utilities are installed underground. Yes.
But if they develop more, that overhead line will have to disappear because they would have additional lots there and then they'd have to put the cable underground.
That is, that is correct. So code says that all overhead lines should be underground, which implies that they're existing.
Right.
So as soon as that overhead line that runs east-west across the north side of this-
That's right.
-is part of a final plat, that's when that triggers and it will get buried.
Would, would have to be get buried.
That's correct.
And, and that's what they would like to keep overhead. Is that what I understand?
That's what the variance was applied for, yes.
Which would mean that, if I understand this correctly, half of this development would have underground wiring and half of it would have an overhead wire hanging over it. Uh, I guess of which you can put down wires to put underground for the individual houses if a second development comes about. Is that correct?
Uh, Mayor and Counselor Hanson, no. Um, so if you, if you look at the, the final plat that was given to you with the six lots-
Which one? Block one, block two, block three?
Uh, just the, just the final plat, which only shows-
Yeah.
-these six lots.
That's right. That's right.
Um, the overhead power line extends east-west just to the north of this. So there are only going to be six residences here and they will all have underground power.
Right.
Now, when the rest of the cul-de-sac gets developed, the lines all go underground. So there won't be any houses that would be, you know, necessarily tapping into that and it wouldn't be splitting the cul-de-sac because as soon as the rest of this cul-de-sac develops, it goes underground. So there will be these six residences and then a whole bunch of land that's only preliminary platted, which would have an overhead power line running through it, but there would be nothing on the land.
But if it were to develop, then the wires would have to come underground.
Correct. Correct.
So, eh, you know, it seems kind of backwards, eh, if you pardon my expression here, but if you, if you don't do it now, it'd have to do it later in order to develop this land further.
That is correct. That's, it's similar to, um, just all infrastructure improvements, which is similar to the road. The same reason why we're not requiring this cul-de-sac to be totally finished is because once it exits the bound of that final plat-
Correct.
-there's no longer authority to require it to be done. Um, because something could happen. They could sell off the rest of the property. They could decide not to develop it, you know. There are a lot of things that could happen. So it's similar to the road that only any improvements that are required, they're limited to the bounds of the final plat. So because that overhead line is not within this final plat, it's not going to be buried. Now, if they had chosen to final plat the entire cul-de-sac at one time as opposed to half of it, then it would all get buried at this, you know, beginning stage. However, because they chose not to do that, it's not going to.
So then let me ask the question that I still don't understand. What are they applying for? I mean, we can't require them to put it underground except within the plat and outside we have no authority to require it, correct?
Can I show you a picture?
Feel free.
These are your power line poles, right there.
Yeah.
So it comes down this alley-
That's right.
-and here, so-
And here, so, here, if I can get, move it here again.
Yeah.
There's a power pole, there's a power pole, and that goes up on the hill. These power lines have been here twenty years.
And they would have to go...
And they were outside the city. So, if he goes across this line here, where that power pole, then at that time, it has to bury it. And anybody that builds in this area here, and then it comes across the ridge, this is Twenty-Second, this is a really old picture. That's all curved and gutted and everything, and there's our cold, there's our, um...
Circles.
Sir, yeah. So, all of that there, so, until, until it builds past that line, they have to bury it. This is an existing power line, it's been there twenty years. Then it goes across the ridge here, and this is our brand-new tech center there. But again, it's not on that property. We didn't build that way, so we came up to it and we stopped. So, until somebody builds underneath that power line, builds through it, pull, pull, pull all the way to the substation.
Will exist.
Nothing will happen. It'll exist.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, just to clarify, this application has, it's only remotely related to the power lines that has come before you for changing. It wasn't changed. Um, there was a variance in the past regarding this preliminary plat, and just this area of land in general regarding the power lines. However, there's no changes or anything happening to the power lines with this final plat.
Yes.
Council Hanson?
Yeah.
You feel...
It's clear to me, yeah.
Council Schuster, did you have a further question?
No, I'm gonna withdraw.
Okay. Um, I have one question for city staff, and that is, one of the conversations related to the power lines is the enormous cost of burying the power lines. And that was the conversation that we had, I believe, when the changes came before us. My concern here is that we're, we're final-plating six, six lots here, right? On one final plat. And assuming they don't have to finish the rest of the subdivision, and they don't have to finish the rest of the lots. So, by not requiring power lines to be platted, and that cost to be equalized over all of these lots, aren't we in turn forcing this cost back off to fewer lots, and fewer lots, and fewer lots? So now, if, 'cause you could probably plat around the power line, right? You can do some down here, you can do some down here, and never get within the twenty-five yards. Am I, eh, is that an option?
Uh, Mayor and Council, in theory, um, they could develop the beginning portions of the three cul-de-sacs, um, with three temporary turnarounds. Um, however, it was the applicant's choice to plat it in this manner, so by no means are we forcing the cost onto any number of lots. They could have final-platted it in its entirety. Um, there could be the concept of final-plating these, so they can sell them, so that they can have the, the cash flow to bury the lines for when they develop the next portion. Uh, that's all part of the private real estate market. Um, it's the applicant's choice on how they want to develop it. But in theory, yes, they could develop the southern portion of the three cul-de-sacs, and then develop the northern portion of said cul-de-sacs.
So, continuation of that question, is there any way or any conditions that the city can put on them to require to fully develop the plat? I'm assuming not, because my concern is we're gonna have half-developed pieces here, a power line that's still not buried, and three temporary turnarounds, so that we don't, so that they don't go through the expensive burying power line.
Uh, Mayor and Council, not to my knowledge, there would be any way to require them to develop it in any order. Um, not to my knowledge. However, the applicant is here, you could ask him what his plans are, um, and just make sure that that's not the thought, or if that is the thought, then we know now.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for city staff? Thank you, Mr. Hall, appreciate it. So, I'll give you the opportunity, the applicant. Does the applicant wish to come up and speak to the application at all?
Okay. Do you have a question?
Questions from council on the application?
Actually, I may have one question.
Please.
I think it was asked.
If you could come forward, please, and introduce yourself in the record.
Maybe you have an answer for it, maybe you don't. Um, I'm aware that there's different types of power lines. It's almost an injustice to call anything that's above-ground a power line. You've got transmission lines that go across the country. You've got transmission lines that if you cut them, you, you cut out half a laramie or quarter of laramie, and then you have other ones that just service the local neighborhood. And, and I'm under the assumption that the cost of burying those various lines are tremendous, variety-wise, almost to the point of being millions and millions of dollars versus a couple thousand dollars. Is, do you have an estimate on this line, if we were to bury it, say, for the amount of property that's been preliminary-platted? This particular line we're talking about in the future, that would have to be buried?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, Councilman Polikas, I'm Kristy Roberts with Gerch Baker Engineering. I represent the developer. Um, I do not have my notes on this with me, but I believe the cost to bury the line across this entire preliminary plat was about a quarter of a million dollars, came to an additional ten thousand dollars per lot.
If you divided that amount out to the lots within that preliminary plat, uh, could you provide me with the additional cost of each lot?
Ten thousand dollars per lot.
Thousand dollars per lot, okay, thank you.
That was across the whole preliminary plat.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I guess I, I do have one question, based on my previous questions. Um, do you have any, any thoughts or comments as to the future development of this? And my concern being leaving a neighborhood with a, a power line that's not buried, and what that looks like?
It looks like what it looks like now, right? Um, no, I, I think that the future development of this property is based solely on the real estate market and laramie, which is as predictable as the weather, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. There are no other members of the public? Are there any other members of the public that want to speak? No, okay. So, come back to council for discussion. Council Polikas?
Um, Mayor, you brought up a good point. As far as, do you divide the cost out equally and absorb it at the beginning, or do you wait for the end? And, by the way, this is happening all over laramie, but it's more so happening with arterial streets. If you look at a lot of our subdivisions, when the subdividers come up to an arterial street, because the cost, they get no benefit out of it. They develop a street and they can't put a house beside it, because it's an arterial street. So, a lot of, a lot of developers are just cutting off their streets, one block or, or two or three lots short of an arterial street. This is the same situation that's happening. But in defense of the builder, I'll say this. Um, if you've gotta add ten thousand dollars per lot, it either comes out of your pocket, or you've got to increase the price by ten thousand dollars, and now you're not compet, now you're not competitive with your competitors, because unless that lot's something special, they're gonna look just down the street and buy a lot for ten thousand dollars less. So, they're caught between a rock and a hard place, and I certainly can understand why they're trying to develop, at least, at least get some money from their land. Now, following up, at some point in time, our community needs to so, needs to decide whether we want to bury every single power line in our community. And by the way, the Turner Tract has one huge power line going through it that would be probably in the millions of dollars to bury. Okay, and I believe also our Turner Tract has it. Not, excuse me, our, uh, Sierra Sky has the same situation up there. Or do we want to create some sort of a definition of what's reasonable to bury and what isn't? And we haven't done that yet. So, this poor guy's trying to get some money out of his land, and he's doing the best he can do to, uh, hopefully, he's hoping that we come up with a solution that's reasonable for the problem, or the quandary that he's in right now. So, I'm gonna support this, 'cause I understand where he's coming from, but the big, the big elephant in the room is what are we gonna do with these power lines throughout our whole community? And how are we gonna treat them? Thank you.
Mr. Teague, please.
Mayor and Council, just as a reminder, uh, power line amendments came before you with the last round of UDC amendments, which would have significantly changed those requirements, and those were, uh, denied at one of the readings. I can't remember exactly which one of those. Um, city staff has been in conversation with, uh, LCBA about bringing something else back to you regarding power lines. Uh, just with staff time and things like that, we just have not quite pulled that together yet. Uh, we have met with the power company on this to try to get better understanding of that. This is now multiple times we've met with them. And so, just trying to, I think, compartmentalize this idea of what power lines are, and not grouping them into this one power line, and what the differences of those are, and how they affect development costs as we look at developing lots within the community. Existing lines versus new lines also come into play. So, uh, just, just for a simple update and information for the council, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Teague. Mr. Schuster?
This is gonna be, like they said, a big elephant in the room. First house I lived in, um, everything was above ground. I would say probably fifty percent of our houses have a gra, above-ground power lines going to an eve, then going into the house, and they're gonna be the older houses. I live in a house now that was manufactured in seventy-eight, and it's completely buried. I have no lines anywhere. Well, I guess cable TV is stapled to my fence, so it's not buried. But I, I have found out even that wasn't supposed to be that way, that that's supposed to be buried. But I don't want them digging up my patio either. So, that one's gonna be a tough one. But the first house I lived in, I remember that when we had a big snowstorm, weighted the lines down, they touched, blew the breaker, and ten square blocks were dark. This line we're talking about here that's above ground, it feeds our UL laboratories. Anything happens to this line, we go dark up there. It comes out of an alley, and like I said, this line's been here at least for twenty years. And it goes down the alley, and it probably feeds off, probably has some little substations, small transformers and substations that feed probably even my house to get over to it. But it is a transmission line, it's gonna be one of the more expensive to bury. It goes the cross, um, a lot of our tech park up top. So, I, I, I'm guessing that we're gonna be required to bury part of it too, when and if, when and if we develop that park. So, it's, it's one of these things that there's a big, huge elephant in the room. To probably build every single, bury every single line in town here, it's probably two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. Power company isn't gonna wanna do it. The local residents aren't gonna wanna do it. I'm glad mine's already buried, 'cause that means it's not gonna affect me. Am I gonna have to someday dig up that line and replace it? Yes. And it'll be five times more expensive to put that line back in than a hanging line. So, it's nice to get it out of the area, it's probably safer underground, although a company that came in to do some street work behind my dad's building hit that line and almost melted a tractor down to the ground, because his store had four-hundred-and-forty volts and about a thousand amps. Lucky that the, uh, driver got out, but his only thing saving him was those iron pads down to the ground to ground him out. But we had to do without electricity for a week. They had to bring in a portable generator. The grounds above are cheaper to maintain. The grounds below are very, very nice for our visual sight. So now you're gonna make a decision. We're gonna require one area, but we're not gonna require existing. So, if we go two blocks over, what's in the alley there gets to remain above ground. But we're gonna require it here. So, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be something. We're gonna make up some decisions on this.
Mr. Connor?
Um, staff did some looking back and trying to find the, uh, cost estimate from Rocky Mountain Power. Um, the Rocky Mountain Power estimate to do the work was a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, Gerch Baker Engineering with Backville quoted an additional twenty-five thousand dollars for a total of two-hundred thousand dollars. Um, however, I would just like to try to redirect us back on the, the final plat, um, since the power lines are not bound in this. Um, it seems like a conversation, uh, for another time.
Other comments from city council or discussion on this?
I just wanna make a comment that, um, Planning Commission passed this, and so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna vote yes.
Any other comments or discussion? City Clerk Roll Call, please.
Shemway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
No.
That's eight yeses and one no, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, on to item number fifteen. Uh, any public comment on non-agenda items? Not seeing any tonight. All right, moving on to consideration of future council work session topics. Any thoughts on future council work sessions?
About power lines?
I think that's where I'm coming. Anything else? Any other work sessions? Okay. Any questions on the upcoming meeting schedule? Okay. All right, let's move on to item number seventeen. Council Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that council adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations according to Wyoming Statute's paragraph sixteen dash four, dash four oh five, section A, seven, Roman numeral seven.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Polikas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned to executive session regarding land negotiations.